Evening, I call this board meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of a fire emergency, an alarm will sound. Please note, all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone, please turn your cell phones to silent. Thank you for your cooperation. Item three, additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda.
There are none.
Excellent. Number four, consent agenda. Motion for one through five, please.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Communications, correspondence.
Yes, a few things that you have in your board packets. Leilani and David Tetral were selected to be a part of the New York State Senate Youth Leadership Award Program this summer. So we're happy and proud of them. In your board packets, we did get an extension of the speed limit for the high school. It's not perfect in terms of what we would like, but it's a lot closer. So we'll be working both with our village police, Senator Hellman and Senator Gallivan, to make sure it's 20 miles all the way through the school zone. So we got good news with that. Sal Santora and Mrs. Senator Hellman were very helpful with that. Also in your board packets, I shared with you our students that are enrolled in our ACE program, which is affiliated with GCC. So we had 45 students take a total of 197 credit hours. And with that, our students paid $13,002. If they actually went to GCC, they would have paid $38,415, so quite a bit of savings. And for those same three credit hours that they earned for each of those courses, if they were to take that at SUNY, a SUNY school, they would have paid $58,000 or another $45,000 more than what they originally paid. And then a private institution would have paid another $154,000. So a great benefit for 45 students to take, that took courses. That's it.
Thank you. And guests of the board, some of the members of our top 10.
I'll actually just ask the two members of the top 10 that are here to stand for me, please. As the board knows, we will just continue inviting our top 10 until we get them all. One of the things I will say, and I'm going to press on these two young people to just share a little bit with the board, but our top 10, when I look at this group, they are involved in almost everything that happens in this school. So just know that they are not blowing us off this evening. They are, they are competing. They are somewhere doing something representing the Raiders this evening. So first, I will introduce Elliot Dietrich. Elliot is number five this year for the class. Elliot, will you just share your plans for after school? And will you just help me and share with the Board of Education? Just a few things that you do beyond academics here for us.
Oh yeah. So, um, next year, I'm going to be attending University of Buffalo for their BSN program. So I'll get my Bachelor's of Science in Nursing, um, within four years. So, yeah, I'm in the honors college for that too. And then in addition to academics, I do, um, we just completed Brainstormers this past week.
Congratulations.
And we placed, um, second in our area. So we were beaten by Geneseo, but it was not as bad of a blowout as I thought. So, I think it's a win. Um, and then I also did math team and I've done our ICE competition and all of those, like, more academic challenges. That's kind of my thought.
And the musical.
And the musical.
Let me help you remind yourself how busy you are while you maintain your academics. Next, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce to you this year's auditorium is Kelsey Curtis.
Hi. Next year, I'll be attending, uh, Houghton University for either English and Writing in their London Honors Program. So I'll be able to travel abroad for my second semester in my freshman year. Beyond academics, I'm involved in musical, both indoor and outdoor track, brainstormers, ICE competition, as Elliot said, almost every single club that's offered in the school. NHS, which we're both part of.
I would just say, the reason I wanted to point it out to you this evening is because definitely every year, when I look at the picture of the top 10, I see what I refer to as every organization has a set of workforces, right? People that just like move the organization forward and make that happen. And I think it's imperative to draw everyone's attention to the fact that our top 10 are kids that are definitely representing us on every single stage and platform that you could imagine while maintaining these grades. So these young people are definitely doing school from, I'm going to say, 5:00 in the morning. Do I have to go earlier? 5:00, okay, 5:00, they both do. Some kids will tell me slightly earlier, but I think on average, 5:00 in the morning until usually midnight by the time they are doing their full slate of APs, competing for us out on academic fields and maintaining the grades that they are. So congratulations, you guys. Work well done.
That's all. Okay, we're going to back up a sec since I skipped over our Raider Points of Pride. Leilani Menegro and David Tetral have been nominated to the 2023 New York State Senate Youth Leadership Award Program. Congratulations to them. And our Grade 2 through 5 Fun Night was a big success on April 14th.
Fifth grader Kalen Wiley won first place in the SUNY Geneseo Peace Poster Contest. Kalen and her family were invited to attend a ceremony at SUNY Geneseo on April 30th. And seventh grader James Wildy also won the SUNY Geneseo Peace Poster Contest. James and his family were invited to attend a ceremony at SUNY Geneseo on April 30th.
The Junior National Honor Society and National Honor Society welcomed home Honor Flight veterans at the Frederick Douglass Airport, the first Honor Flight of the season. Middle high school students joined the first book bento club. This is a book club that comes with, I don't know if I'm saying it right, I'm sorry, bento box of snacks, and of course, the book. Students and Mrs. Barbo, Barbo. Meet weekly to discuss the book. I'll be, I'll be reading anymore tonight. Sorry.
And for the third time, two seniors nominated for New York State Senate Youth Leadership Award. Hundreds of teens across the state were nominated. And we're proud to say that Leilani Menegro and Dave Tetral received the award. Senator Pam Hellman will officially recognize Dave, Leilani, and other award recipients at a program in Victor, New York. Then finally, uh, the National Honor Society ran an awareness campaign and fundraiser for adolescent eating disorders. They raised $800, which was donated to the Healing Connections Adolescent Eating Disorder Residential Program coming to Pittsburgh, New York.
Also, we have March Savvy Raiders. In the middle school for English, we have Edwin Verdugo Garcia. For science, Benjamin Schuler. Music, Jonathan Nanaraj. Math, Kennedy Williams. Spanish, Jovi Barrett. Art, Jacob Kurtz. Social studies, Jessa Paduano. Health and PE, David Preston. CTE, Olivia Lassoco. And for the high school, English, we have Kalen Jake. For English, science, Isabella Corcoran. Technology, Austin Chanel. Math, Jonah Hall. Spanish, Oliver Johnson. Art, Teresa Van De Water. Health, Luke Donahue. Music, Joshua Middleton. Business, CJ Clemmons. And social studies, Cassidy Mitchell. And I apologize if I didn't say any correctly. That is fantastic.
And then some more honors for the National Technical Honor Society. Um, there's students, um, in that. Malina Bellos, animal science, Nathan Dahl, metal trades, Colton Ingrick in auto tech. And there's also two champion award winners, Kalen Jake, who's a junior, and James Wildy, who is in seventh grade.
Excellent. We have nobody signed up for public forum, but we do like to hear from the other students that are in the audience. If you don't mind saying, um, what's your, uh, your name and what you have for future plans?
Oh, okay. Hi, I'm Gabrielle Martin, and I'm going to be attending St. Bonaventure University for adolescent education with a concentration in history.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Arissa Rose, and I'm going to Upstate, and I am going for interior design.
I'm Senator Bowen. I'm going to work right after school.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. And superintendent's report, Mr. Melisani?
Yeah, I mentioned this earlier in, um, in communications. So the New York State Department of Transportation did extend our speed limit for the elementary, for the high schools. You know, it basically ends about 100 yards south, north of, um, Pennington Drive. And with that, we have buses that are pulling out regularly. So I've tried it for two or three years, and they've kept shooting us down. They came out, did another study, after they did a study over, I think it was last spring. And this time, they honored the extension. The difficulty right now is that they're changing the speed limit from, for 25 miles an hour. Currently, it's 30. They're going to go from 30 to 25. And they're also only going to extend it for a period of time, for example, at 7 to 8 o'clock in the morning, and then 2 to 4. We believe that's actually going to complicate matters, probably make it unsafe. So working with Caladonia Police and, uh, and Senator Burnside, excuse me, Senator Hellman's office, to see if we can get, get it to be consistent with what the elementary speed zone is. So we hope to get that resolved for the start of the 23-24 school year.
So it's actually a separate speed zone?
Yeah, a separate speed zone and only designated times, and it's coincides with when there's a crossing guard. So we're going to try to work on that. Uh, we have some great allies in our corner, so hopefully we get that very similar to what the elementary is all the way through the entire speed zone.
Trying to stay positive here, but it, it, that just sounds like a disappointment. The whole thing is a disappointment because they went, they're going to put 15 signs out there. On Wednesday, you can go 21. I mean, I mean, why, why can't they just do it right?
Well, that's what we're going to ask. There's still time. There's still time. Again, granted, they, they actually accommodated us to some extent, but it's not exactly what we were hoping.
So they're maintaining the 20 mile an hour in front of the elementary building?
Yes. And then going from basically, right around to get to our first Mr. Walker's house, from that forward on past the district, it'd be 25 miles an hour, which is currently 30, but we would want it 20 all the way through.
Your effort is duly noted.
Yeah, thanks.
It's not your, it's not your first try.
Well, see, I hope that they, they get it right for us. That's it.
Okay. New business. Item one, approval of BOSI's administrative budget for 2023-2024. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Caladonia Mumford Central School District hereby approves the proposed administrative budget for the Genesee Livingston-Stuben, Wyoming Board of Cooperative Educational Services for the 2023-2024 school year in the amount of $3,132,47. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That carried. Item two, election of Genesee Valley BOSI's Board of Education members. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Caladonia Mumford Central School District cast its vote in the annual election of members to the Board of Cooperative Educational Services for the following: Ernest Haywood, William Kane, Michael Rinner, and Paul Webster. Motion, please?
Yeah.
Second.
Any seconds? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That carried. Item three, American Rescue Plan and State Reserves Update.
Mr. Nardone.
So every six months, um, as we said in our plan with ARP and CARISA money, we have to just give a board update and an update to the community. Everything will be posted online as our minutes are on what we're doing with that, with that money. So there's two different grants. There's CARISA and ARPA. CARISA was set to expire September of '23. We used all of it in the '21-'22 school year. So that's why on that sheet that you'll see there, um, there is nothing remaining in those two, uh, different grants. It's comprised of vesting gear, that's why I said two. ARP is a two different kind of things. So you have ARP IDEA, which is more for special education. A lot of that money is set aside for purchase services to the different, um, not-for-profit and private schools that we do business with. So they'll actually take that money from us. And then the other ARP grant is split into four different categories: 90%, 5%, 1%, 1%. I know that doesn't add up to 100. We don't know why. It adds up to 97. There's not another ARP 3%. That's just how it is. So with ARP, there's minimum and maximum spending requirements per year. You can't go below it, you can't go above it. We hit our mark in '21-'22. We're going to hit our mark again in '22-'23. Although you'll see really nothing was expensed in the '22-'23 school year, it has been expensed. The money just hasn't been moved over to the federal fund. So the reason you're not seeing that is the money's been allocated, but not actually expensed from the federal fund yet. We try to do that with all our grants at the end of the school year. So in June, I move all the money from the general fund over to the federal fund to account for those grants, and then we submit for reimbursement at that time. So we're on track. We've had some minor revisions. So everything as far as the mascot, we've moved over to the ARP grant. I still have to submit the FS10A. We got verbal approval. I just got to submit the actual approval or the actual form. I didn't want to do that until all expenses were incurred. That way, we're not submitting five different amendments. So once that's done, I'll be doing it, and then we'll move that money over at the end of the school year. So again, everything's working fine. And does the board have any questions? Awesome.
Thank you. Approval of transportation requests to out-of-district, non-public school for 2022-2024. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the transportation request to out-of-district, non-public school for the 2023-2024 school year. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Yep.
Discussion? Was this, this, we're already going there?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number five, development of board goals. So, um, this is one of the things that we, as the school board, do, um, semi-annually, two to, every two to three years. Um, and it's one of the things that we actually are steering the district, but with these goals. So we have definitely one new board member, and even with the three new board members that weren't a part of the discussion that led to the last set of goals that were developed for the 20, from 2022 to 2023. So Mr. Melisani and I decided to make sure that everybody's on the same page, um, moving forward through this. For those of you that remember, the last time, we were really in the middle of COVID when we did it. So usually, the board goals were, were derived off of our board self-evaluations, and then, um, then Mr. Melisani, off of those, would make a suggest, a suggestion based on those that we approved. So this time, we're starting a little bit earlier so that Mr. Melisani can plan more with the admin team on how to achieve the goals. So first step is to review the last set of goals. And, um, we're also going to show that all these goals have been achieved or where they stand in their achievement. So under the academic program and student achievement, um, the first goal was provide professional development to foster continuous improvement. And how did we meet those goals?
Yeah, just a few things. I'll just say out a few of them. So we have a professional development committee that comes together, is made up of a team of teachers and administrators. They utilize a needs assessment. So in other words, they put out, it's surveyed to staff and ask them what they need in order to be successful. From there, then it derives our professional development opportunities for a period of time. In this case, it was for three years. Uh, other things, when we're done with a superintendent conference, say, or a professional development opportunity, we also ask for feedback. So if we were to run a similar program down the line, things that we might change to make it better. And each year, by law, your professional development plan is approved by the Board of Education.
Okay, and the other one, another one under academic program and student achievement was to develop and implement programs, clubs, activities, and experiences to ensure student engagement and are prepared for college and career.
Yeah, so here, this is probably one of the areas which we have shined in terms of providing enrichment opportunities for our students. And that all stemmed from a needs assessment. We simply asked students, what would you like to experience prior to graduation? And from that, we've increased our club opportunities, archery club, Lego, debate club, as well as a lot of other enrichment opportunities that kids stay after school just for an hour or two. Uh, we have created high school course electives. Uh, we've actually increased and enhanced our Student-to-Work program. Uh, we have various colleges, the Rochester area colleges come in to provide seminars for our, our students. We have career luncheons, Genesee Valley Glow with your hands, uh, with the agriculture component, as well as healthcare, uh, which was done this past spring, which is outstanding. And one of our goals is that every student that graduates from Caladonia Mumford, they're entering the workforce, is that they'll have a job before they leave.
And still under, um, academic program and student achievement is to implement the criteria and procedures for adopting, adapting, piloting, writing, and reviewing curriculum.
Yes, this is actually one of our strategic goals. So we now have procedures in place that allows students to change their curric, excuse me, staff to change their curriculum or adopt or adapt it, especially when we're getting away from the modules to some extent. This year, actually, we're reviewing the science curriculum, K-12. So we have procedures in place to look at all the curricular areas over a seven-year period.
Excellent. And then on a whole nother group of goals under demonstrating fiscal leadership, the first goal there is to procure additional technology devices to ensure smooth transition to both hybrid and 100% remote learning opportunities to enhance productivity of all students and staff.
Yeah, so again, remember, these goals were made in 2020, so we're in, in the middle of the pandemic. So we fulfilled the district's technology plan with, with respect to one-to-one devices. Also, from that point, we also have purchased all new active boards for all of our teachers. We purchased hotspots for students that don't have the capability at home, uh, may that be because of internet connectivity or the inability to pay. Uh, we've actually enhanced our Google Classroom format because of the pandemic and so forth, but now we have a Google Classroom, uh, oper, or experience here for students. Uh, we've purchased a tremendous amount of apps to meet students' and staff needs, and all of our software is NY2D compliant.
Uh, also under fiscal leadership, develop and develop a strategic financial plan to ensure financial stability of the district.
Yes, again, this is one of our strategic plan goals. So this year, actually after this meeting tonight, Mr. Nardone will be working with the board committee, uh, just to review what our plans are in the later spring and into early summer. We're developing short-term and long-term financial plan. And this work, we have contracted with Rick Tims to assist the district.
Still under fiscal leadership, supporting the development and implementation of a five-year facilities plan, including future capital projects and ongoing maintenance.
Yes, so each, uh, over a three-year period, every school district, um, must get, uh, must have or experience a, a building condition survey. And this was back in 2019. We actually completed ours in 2021. And it was done by hunt engineers. And in this case, they basically review your plant, your useful life of various pieces of equipment, any structural deficiencies, or if we desire any particular learning spaces. So this is really coming into handy, with the district going out for a capital project in December of '23. Uh, we are utilizing this document, uh, to, to replace and enhance our educational program, which will be voted on our, play our taxpayers in December of '23.
And still fiscal leadership, assure transparency in all budget, in the budget development process.
Yes, so with that is, if you can go to our website, but all of our meetings are recorded and shared on our district website for all of our meetings, not just, uh, the budget portions of our meeting. All the minutes are on our website within the first 14 days or within 14 days. All of our presentations and supporting documents that we're required to have by law are on our website, and they're all readily available, uh, for transparency for our school community.
And demonstrate fiscal leadership by exploring and enhancing shared services in order to provide meaningful programs and opportunities for students.
Yeah, so here, uh, the board has a shared service committee, which we meet with Byron Burgen, Board of Education, uh, also to provide opportunities both academically and with athletics and just enrichment opportunities. This year, we consulted with Leroy Central Schools and also with the Wiccan Child Act to provide opportunities for our students. And, uh, also, a lot of shared services with our BOSI's program for vocational ed, ed settings for our students.
Okay, and then in another, uh, bigger block under, uh, what we're calling item three, was develop and implement a plan for safe and secure school environment. Bullet one under that, follow New York State and Livingston County guidelines as outlined in the Caladonia Mumford School District reopening plan.
Again, taking you back to when this, these goals were developed, our reopening plan was a model for other schools to emulate. If you can recall, our school was in operation on the second day after shutdown. It was great planning by the administrative team and teachers and just wonderful students that cooperated with us all the way through. Our plan obviously required a safe return for students, and in, in doing so, we had very little, um, transmission of the COVID in our schools. And along those lines, Sue, we've also had, had safety and security audits. This past fall, we had a security audit conducted by a third-party vendor. And then in October, November, and December, we had our school resource officers conduct an audit as well. We're making changes to our, our safety and security aspects of our school.
Okay. Also under safe and secure, uh, school environment, maintain a climate that acknowledges and celebrates diversity and inclusiveness while recognizing the dignity and self-worth of each person.
Yeah, I'm going to get in a few bullets, but actually, we had a couple pages of evidence here. Uh, one is our special education plan that, uh, that was created just this, this past year. It was adopted by the board. Others are social emotional surveys and interventions that we put in place for students and the various supports. Uh, we hired a full-time ENL teacher and other teachers, so now we're at two, to make sure we're accommodating our students that are learning English for the first time. We've done some special things with co-teach model and integrated ENL services as well. All base bullying prevention survey to make sure we're, again, we're taking care of our students and empowering bystanders. Wonderful, uh, awards and recognitions, uh, across the district, may that be the Savvy, the Savvy Raiders Champion Awards, celebrating, uh, a rare disease that we had a special, it's coming up this May. Make sure we're, we're supporting our students in the elementary school, but also across the district. Those are just a few.
Okay. And implement the comprehensive student wellness plan that will focus on physical, emotional, and social well-being of students.
Well, actually, that, those are one.
That's part of it.
Yeah. So it's, there's a couple other things that I would add to that is, um, continued support from our full-time social worker. The district hired a little over a year ago. She's doing a super job this year. Um, we have a full-time pupil director, uh, services director with Magnus. She's doing a great job coordinating all of our services for our students. And we had a redesign of our comprehensive school counseling plan. Again, Mrs. Rogers presented that.
And the, like, the things like the fifth and sixth grade transition mentor program is a good.
That's outstanding. Actually, we're just, they're actually coordinating those efforts for next year as we, as we talk.
Excellent. Um, moving on to the last category of board goals. The board shall demonstrate its leadership role in representing our community. Item one, ensure that our district's culture aligns with our mission and beliefs.
Yeah, so first and foremost, is the district's, one of your actually budget goals, to make sure you provide the resources to our administrative team to meet the students' needs and obviously to fulfill the district's mission. Uh, the board's very active legislatively. If it's going to their local breakfasts or writing letters to our senators and assembly persons to make sure they're advocating for our children. And just the high expectations that, that has come to be expected in Caladonia for both academics and behavior. It's, it starts right here at this table.
Uh, strengthen communications with parents and community residents to increase understanding of instructional programs and school district activities and initiatives.
Yeah, so if you can recall, back in September, we had a, a presentation to the board where we shared with our school community exactly where you can find our curriculum and instruction on our website. Basically, where our, all of our curriculum lives, and that's pre-K-12. Along those lines, Sue, we, we produced our course catalogs, class syllabus. And then the elementary school, a little bit different, you know, we were able to show and share with our parents exactly what's And then the elementary school, a little bit different, you know, we were able to show and share with our parents exactly what's transpiring throughout the week and their Friday folders.
Nice, and finally, continue harmonious working relationships with the village, town, and county governments.
Yeah, so the, one of the agreements that we've had longstanding with our school resource officer, we're very pleased with the Caladonia Police and how they care for our, our students and staff here. We're glad that, that relationship can continue. And also, we do many capital projects or capital outlay projects with the village and town. If that's repairing some of our roads, or in this case, driveways or parking lots, or building sidewalks, or, you know, the, the, the lane all behind the school. They have been absolutely wonderful to work with. And, uh, we also partner for that, with them, if there's any community service projects that they, that they need done. Our students and staff come to support them as well, but a really good relationship with the village and town.
Okay, so Bob, you want to run down then the plan moving forward for, for developing these next set of goals?
Certainly, so our goal will be, uh, tonight or tomorrow, I think it's tomorrow, um, Sue Booth will be sending the board your eval, your self-evaluation. So our hope is that you would have that completed by May second. And in turn, she'll take all your information, compile it, give it to Mr. Ricker, and he'll have a, a discussion with you in terms of what makes a goal, if it's individual, or if it's something that the board can all be behind. And from there, I will help draft goals through your input for you to consider over the next several board meetings. With hopefully an adoption by the second meeting in June or the, at a reorganization meeting in July, so that the administrative team and I can design a plan to meet those goals. Um, I did share, uh, with the board previously that we talked about a two-year goal from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-five rather than three years. Just because so much is changing in education, and the board was in agreement with that originally, so. If that's still the case, that's what, exactly what I'll do.
Okay, any questions about, uh, board goals? All right, and we had a couple softball players sneak in, so, uh, go ahead, Dr. Chanel.
I'm back up. So will both of you please stand for me? Thank you so much. Do we dare, like, are we, are we good?
How did the game go first?
That's great. I was going to whisper it from over here. We're live, you know. Um, ladies and gentlemen, it is my privilege to introduce you to more members of the top ten for the class of twenty-twenty-three. In tenth place this year, Ms. Abby DiMarco, and in ninth place, Ms. Avery DiMarco. Uh, Abby, let's start with you. Will you just share with the Board of Education your plans for after-school? And also, will you share with them some of the other ways besides your strong academics that you represent the Raiders?
Okay, so I'm going to David next year, maybe University, and I'm in their five-year physician assistance program. And then in the school, I love the regime for the first, for, um, fall and winter. And I'm part of the leadership, uh, what is it called?
Committee.
Committee. Um, and then I'm also a representative of the, of the seniors in the state council.
Congratulations. All right, Avery.
Um, I'm going to Monmouth University in New Jersey to study marketing and management. And for the school, I am the senior class secretary. I can try a thing.
Cheerleading.
Yeah, the example. Volleyball, softball, National Army Society.
I just want them to see, and I will say to the two of you, since you missed it, um, and to the community that's watching, like, one of the things that's special about our top ten is that you represent us in every single thing we do. So thank you for the hard work that you put in academically, sports-wise, being on committees, and getting it done around here. We appreciate you. We're proud of you.
Congratulations. Okay, carrying on with new business. Number six, um, approval of additional board meetings. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved two additional Board of Education meetings for Tuesday, May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, and Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. The purpose of these meetings is to conduct normal school business and the development of Board of Education goals. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay? That motion carried. Number seven, approval of JV baseball merger. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the JV baseball merger with Wheatland Chi-Li for spring, for the spring twenty-twenty-three season. Motion, please?
Sure.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay? That motion carried. Executive session. Resolved that the Board of Education adjourned to executive session at six thirty-five P M to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons and confidential student records protected by FERPA. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay? We will be back. Okay, we are back from executive session. Our last piece of business is personnel. Um, I'd like a motion for both Personnel One and Two as duly laid out in the agenda. Number one, resignation of bus driver for purpose of retirement. And number two, approval of substitute teachers. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay? That motion carried. Resolved that the Board of Education adjourned the meeting of April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three at eight oh three P M. Motion, please?
Yep.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay? Good night, everyone.